Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I will call the meeting into order and ask for approval of the June 8th, 2021 minutes.
Move they be approved, submitted?
Have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes?
No.
Okay. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion passed. Council liaison report. My understanding is we don't have a liaison replacement yet. So Jerry, were you at the council meeting?
No, no, I was not. And my suggestion is that you forego that. You do have a copy of the agenda.
Right.
Just forego that this evening.
Okay. Any questions anyone has about that? We'll move on then to open forum number one. We have two open forums. This is the first one, and I would invite anyone who would like to speak in the open forum to come to the podium, introduce themselves, and you're welcome to speak. Yeah, we'll get to yours in a minute. If no one would like to speak in forum number one, open forum number one, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider a conditional use application by Kyle and Jean. Is it?
Touch.
Touch. Okay, touch. I wouldn't have guessed that. 31738 Blue Ridge Drive Point, Breezy Point, Minnesota. I will open the public hearing for this request and ask the applicant if you would like to come up to the podium and make a presentation of your application?
Um, yeah, I can, I guess.
Okay.
Evening. Um, I guess I submitted all the, you know, hopefully the proper paperwork for thirty by forty eight bullshit. The property has to mention three one seven.
Mm-hmm.
It's dry. Just for bullshit or store. You know, recreational items, all for the ballpark.
Right.
That's what it's.
Okay. Yeah, your application is pretty straightforward. Any questions of Kyle?
Uh, I went by and I looked like he had plenty of land. I wasn't quite sure where it was going to be sighted on it.
Oh, I guess I do have a. Yeah. GIS. Of calling.
We have, we have that, and I could see where your, I think where your house is, and like I say, it looked like there's plenty of room. It was just a matter of whereabouts you were going to put it.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's an issue. Jerry, is that an issue?
Those lines, I guess, um, small. There was a, you can perfect set a lot to the south of there.
Mm-hmm. Don't we have that? It's not in.
It's in that application.
The south of the lot that was there. I have it on this drawing here where it's going, but I don't know.
Oh, I don't think, we didn't get that one, did we?
No.
I apologize. That was supposed to be part of the.
Oh, okay.
The package. Deb's gonna go get a copy for you.
Okay.
But that must be where you have it cleared out, correct?
My, my recollection is that it's to the south of the house. That's
Yeah.
South and a little bit north, or south and a little bit east, I guess, of the house.
Oh, south and a little east of the right.
The driveways in are ready for the shed, or for the building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions, Marcy?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Uh, one more.
Are we gonna wait until we get the copies of the?
Okay, 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 I'm sorry.
Tracy, that's, no, that's okay. While that's happening, maybe we could move on to the staff review and come back to that, to that map when it's available. Thank you. We might have
Okay.
A couple more questions later, but we'll let Jerry do his staff review.
Again, this is a conditional use application, 2021-01. The applicant is Kyle and Jewel Toch. Toch?
Yes, hello.
Okay. Address 31738 Blue Ridge Drive, Breezy Point. Legal description of lots 11 and 12, block 3, White Birch 16. The zoning is R2. The city code is 153.032C-1, or parentheses 1, medium density residential. The application is to construct a 1440 square foot accessory structure. The, in the R2 zone, in our 1,280 square foot accessory structure is allowed just as an over-the-counter building permit as long as they meet setback requirements. By conditional use, they can go up to 1,600 square feet in a cumulative total of accessory structures. There is an existing accessory structure there. That's, I think that's why the application is for 1440 and not for 1,600. The applicant has submitted an application for conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory structure, 1440 square feet and up to, property is zoned R2. The total property area is 52799 square feet, located on Blue Ridge Drive, consists of two lots. The lots have been consolidated. Upon review of a conditional use application, the commission needs to consider findings as required by section 153.119E. In review, the commission should state whether or not the finding is acceptable towards granting of the CUP. The following findings must be met. The use or the development is an appropriate conditional use in the land use zone. The property is zoned R2, and the request is in a appropriate under section 153.044 and 153.032. The use or the development with conditions conformed to comprehensive land use plan, the use with conditions is compatible to the existing neighborhood, the use with conditions would be interest, would not be interest to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, comfort, convenience, or appearance or prosperity of the city. Again, there's conditions that are, are part of the, the report, and those conditions are straightforward out of the ordinance. Applicant has filed an appropriate application for the CUP. The applicant has paid the appropriate fee for the application. Public notice of the public hearing was published in the legal newspaper, and a public hearing is being held as we speak. We've reviewed the site plan. We've reviewed the CUP application, and we've, are in the process of reviewing building code compliance. We don't finish that unless the CUP were to be granted for the use. An accessory structure is an appropriate conditional use in the R2 zone. The following may be appropriate conditions for approval of the CUP. Applicant shall obtain a building code, our building permit. Applicant shall comply with all setback requirements. Siding and roofing and principal structure and accessory structure shall be of similar material. All structures shall comply with state building code. Height of accessory structure shall not exceed 20 feet, and the accessory structure shall not exceed 1440. I would also mention that we did receive a handwritten letter. I think you have a copy. It's from their neighbor, Richard in Demstapanik. They expressed a concern to me that there, there wasn't any, because of the clearing, there wasn't any buffer between the, the properties. With that, I'll leave it for your debate.
Well, maybe we could go back to this map quickly, Tracy. Has your question been answered by?
Well, yes, it's been answered as to where it will be, yes.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to this, to the applicant presentation if anyone has any questions of Kyle. Roger, any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Marcy?
I do have one question. My question would be, in addressing the applicant or the person that indicated they would like to have a tree line, is there a proposed natural buffer that would be in place?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming they must mean to the west of the proposed building, because everything else has got trees around it. And to the west, I mean, it's all trees except for probably, you know, just a driveway wide enough to get into it. I mean, I can't really put a.
Do you have that map?
Yeah, I guess. City street there and the building. And you gotta drive around.
The, the way I was looking at your, the site plan here, and the note, it would be the neighbor behind you, and it would be behind your new shed, and, and it would be to block the shed from the view of their house, which is kind of setback on the lot. I don't know what you, if you had any intention to do anything.
Um, well, if it's the neighbor behind me, I guess I.
Well, it's, it's.
I'm not sure who this party is, but it's.
They live at 7864 Scenic Overlook, so they'd be behind you.
I don't know if it's one directly behind me, or?
Uh, well, I don't know. I have no idea.
I think so, because he just, he just went a whole barn up in the south of February.
Well, I guess the question is, did you have any thought of doing that?
Yeah, actually, we did. We were gonna plant some kind of trees.
Okay, alright.
On that thirty feet, on that seven.
This would be the applicant, this would be the, the letter that, that came with the concern. His concern is that this building is gonna be put right here, and this area has all been cleared. And if there's no, there are no trees there anymore. It's been cleared all the way to the property line.
Yeah, I certainly wanted to put a buffer there, I guess. I thought I was doing him a favor by cutting all those big hobbles down there or leaning towards his house, but I guess not.
The buffer?
Yeah, yeah, we wanted to plant some. Some paddy bushes or smaller trees back there. I just didn't want, you know, there was a dozen seventy, eighty hobbles back there.
They're, they're gonna fall.
They're falling on the shit. Like I said, most of them are leaning towards his house, so I thought I was doing him a favor. He didn't have any concerns, because I talked to him when I cut him. So he said, go ahead and take them out. I think they're on my property anyway.
He basically says, you know, he, he does not have any problem with it. He just would appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, that's not an issue, because we wanted my something back there anyway, so.
Does there have to be a buffer? Is that stated somewhere that it has to be?
There does not have to be a buffer. You can make it a condition of approval if you so desire. I, you know, I think this is a prime example of where neighbors should be talking to each other, rather than going back to the parent and trying to, to make the parent discipline the child. I hate to use that analogy, but sometimes it's very appropriate.
Anyway, I, you know, we do talk, so I'm kind of surprised that he didn't, didn't just ask me that. But we're both, you know, both don't live up here full time, but we do, we usually see each other at the weekend, but we've, we talk about our old jazz and everything, because he just moved up in February, so.
Where did he put his?
Basically, just.
South of his house?
Uh.
Yes.
South, yeah. And, yeah, that's not a problem. I guess I don't have to move up there. I'm gonna move up anyway.
Jerry?
This comes into play because it's, it's a conditional use permit. The neighbor put up a 1,280 square foot building, which is across the permit, you know, across the board permit. If in fact Kyle would have come in for a 1,280, there isn't any consideration that would have been made at all.
Right.
But the fact that it's a conditional use permit, we do notify all neighbors within 350 feet, and therefore we have a hearing, and those concerns do come out sometimes.
Other questions of Kyle? Thank you very much. I would ask if there is any public input to this application. If so, please approach the podium. I guess not. I will close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is our taking official action on this request. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the, or provide the conditional use permit with jury's stipulations one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I guess I didn't add the, the buffer or anything like that. I figured that, then they ought to be able to work that out on their own.
Right. Lee?
No, I totally agree.
Okay. Marcy? Roger?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Well, both then, all in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion passed. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing to consider a variance application. Richard Burbach. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
Yeah.
Burbach, okay. Circle Drive, Breezy Point. Request to construct a ten by eighteen and a half deck attached to the dwelling. I will open the public hearing for this request and ask the applicant if you would like to come to the podium, introduce yourself, and give us a little. There's, there's a little button right on the top, green command.
Richard Burbach.
Jean Burbach.
So, we bought, this is our fourth cabin over the last 50 years or so on Cottage Hill at Breezy Point. So, we've also had a condo at Surfside. We have a house on Poplar Drive that we rent to my son, who lives up here. So, we bought a small cabin on the hill once again to renovate. This one comes with very little, if you're, is everyone familiar with Cottage Hill? We know the issues up there. It goes back to the 1920s. Before, everything's grandfathered in, well before any zoning codes. But working with Jerry, I thought we were home free. We came within a whisper of getting this done without a variance. We had, came within a few feet of missing, of the impervious coverage. It was like a hundred and sixty, or we, we were able to do 148 square feet, and this was like a hundred and sixty something. So, we came very close, so we could have shrunk the deck and met that. We met the side setbacks, which were like nine feet. Everything's great. And then we got to the back and about to get our permit, and somebody said, oops, you're not 35 feet from Breezy Point Boulevard, which goes straight up a cliff. So, that's where we are, and that's why we had to get the variance. But that is basically our yard is this huge hill, and a deck would level things out, give us a nice little safe area for ourselves, for our grandkids, and it's a lot of my siblings are in their 80s, Jean's are too, so. But give us, give us some yard with a little bit of a view of the lake. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Good. Questions? Anyone? Roger?
I mean, it drops off a lot, so you're gonna have some pretty long deck posts.
Well, it comes out, it, it, it's, it starts.
I guess I didn't walk back there.
It starts dropping up in the middle of the cabin and starts going down. Then from there, it's a, yeah, they're not gonna be that huge. I think he drew some things on the plot, but it's not gonna be that huge. But again, it's the only yard there is, is to put a deck back there. Four of, I think there's six cabins along there. Four of them already have decks, either via a variance or grandfathered in. The gentleman who is here, Tracy, is next to us. He doesn't have one, and we don't have one next to him. But all the others have a deck on that side, because that's essentially your yard.
So, once that deck's built, Jerry, how far, it's 18 feet from the, no, eight feet, huh?
Eighteen feet wide.
Eighteen feet wide, which is the width of the cabin as well. And then we were gonna go up 10 feet.
Okay.
Marcy? No questions? Lee?
Um, so you're gonna go 10 feet off the back?
Off the back of the cabin, yes.
Okay, and then you're gonna wrap around the front side, or just?
We're not gonna wrap around at this point. No.
Intend.
We, we can't. I don't think, at the price of everything right now, I don't think we can afford to do it. But we're thinking of just a doorway somewhere and, and just walk out to the deck. So, people coming over with that one little step, get in the cabin and walk on the deck, so.
Do we, do we have any restrictions on design to make sure it's not gonna fall down, or is that not, we don't care about that? Well, any, any structure that's built today has to conform to state building code. Okay, alright. We, that's, that's a caveat. Okay. If in fact this were approved, this is the land use portion of it, then he's got, then they've got some, they've got to submit some plans, some structural plans, as far as how it's gonna be built, and the building inspector goes through those plans and either approves them or makes recommendations as far as changes. That is, has not been done. That doesn't come until the building permit is, is applied for.
But every, we'll, we'll cover everything with, with contractors who've ever done it, and we'll, Home Depot, everybody knows what we need, and you're gonna put in the cement footings and drill down and.
We did get one from the builder place, I believe, in Cross Lake Build-Off, who gave us some materials and a drawing, so we have some idea of what we're up against.
I like Jerry said, inspector will inspect it for footy in depth and so forth, so.
That's, that's really not, the land use issue, the issue is the, the variance this evening. That's the next step, if in fact the variance is approved, and that's something that's taken care of in the building permit process. Haven't you already started some of the refurbishing?
On the cabin, yes.
Yeah, on the cabin.
Yeah, and we've got a permit for windows.
Jerry, they have, they have a permit.
We have a plumbing inspector.
By the way, I think it looks nice.
Thank you.
Part that's done.
It needed help. It needed some love.
Yes, looking good.
Yeah. Any questions or comments on what Deb just handed us?
So how far would that, would that exceed the back of the property then line?
That would be 16 feet from the property line to the edge of the deck that's proposed.
It should be, technically 30 or?
Thirty feet. Thirty, actually, it's 35 in that, that area, because there's a, there's a street there. This piece of property, this piece of property has streets on both sides. And it's my observation, at least, that there are a number of other similar kind of decks right there.
Well, the one to the south.
I said, I think there are similar.
Oh, yes.
There's six houses, cabins there. Four of them have decks, and ours doesn't, and Tracy's next to us doesn't. But all the rest were, again, were either grandfathered in or they applied for variance and got them.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should I turn this off?
Jerry, would you do your staff review of this application?
Again, the variance request is 2021-004. The applicant is Richard and Jean Burbach. The legal description is Lot 20, first addition to Breezy Point Estates. The address is 30116 Circle Drive, Breezy Point. The zoning is R3, and the, it's original neighborhood. The caveat there is that, that is, that area is served by Municipal Sewer. The appropriate city codes is 153.003, 153.120, 153.044, and 153.045. The applicants recently purchased the cabin located at 30116 Circle Drive. Cabin is part of the original resort area. The lot is 2970 square feet. The square footage of the cabin is like 595 square feet. Front of the property is on Circle Drive, and the rear of the property is on Breezy Point Drive. The impervious coverage has, without the proposed deck, is like 20% today. The applicant is requesting a variance to add a deck that's 10 by 15 to the existing cabin. The variance is necessary to expand a legal non-conforming use. It's considered a legal non-conforming use because it's something that's been existing. It doesn't, but it does not conform to setbacks. Variance definition, legally permitted deviation is provided by Minnesota statutes 462.357, as it may be amended from time to time from the provisions of this chapter as deemed necessary by the Board of Adjustment. You, as the planning commission, are acting as the Board of Adjustment when it comes to, to variances and conditional use permits. When the strict interpretation of the variance would create a practical difficulty and may be impractical because of circumstances relating, relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property, and when the deviation from the ordinance with any attached conditions will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinances. Variances cannot create a land use not permitted in the zone. Variance review, 153.120. Variances shall be decided within a reasonable amount of time with consideration for the following. The strict interpretation of the ordinance would be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or characteristics of the property not created by the landowner. The deviation from the ordinance with any attached conditions will be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. The land use created by the variance is permitted in the zoning district where the property is located. The variance will not alter the existential character of the locality, and the variance is not for economic reasons alone, but reasonable use of the property does not exist under the ordinance. Findings to support approval or deny a variance request. The following findings are provided for the board discussion in relation to the approval of the variance request. The applicant contends that the practical difficulty is caused by the age of the subdivision predating the subdivision and zoning regulations. predating the subdivision and zoning regulations, the steep slope of the backyard, and the limited size of the lot. The following findings of fact may be used to support denial of the variance request. The commission finds no practical difficulty. Pre-existing provide for the reasonable use of the property. Actions, the following actions are per, potential actions that the council could choose to enact. Determine that the practical difficulty exists, size of the lot, topography, and pre-existing conditions, and improve the variance. Option could be to expand legal non-conforming use, exceed the maximum impervious coverage to twenty-six percent, and the right-of-way setback of sixteen feet from Breezy Point Drive. Option two would be to determine that no practical difficulty does exist and deny the variance. The Planning Commission Board of Review, the board may by resolution choose to approve or deny the requested variance. Resolution should clearly state the reasons for the approval or denial of the variance.
Is there any public input to this application?
Can I just add a caveat to this? I, uh, if you, if you were to go around this, this whole area that this cabin is located in, just about everything that's being done or that could be done or is potentially to improve the, the existing cabins and whatever, is probably gonna require some kind of a variance. It's, it's a, it's not a typical neighborhood that we have in other areas. It, it doesn't allow for a lot of setbacks. It, you know, it's, it's, it's a different animal to deal with, quite frankly. I don't think zoning ordinances were made for this, these type of areas.
Any public input? If there is, please approach the podium. If not, I will close the public hearing on this application and move to our next agenda item, which is official action on the application. I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the variance, um, due to the fact that it is a little bit of a unique area up there. And, um, based on the age of the subdivision and the previous grandfathering, I would approve the request as is.
Do we have a second?
Second, huh?
Yeah, motion and second discussion. Tracy?
Is there any possibility that the condition that it be properly engineered and built according to the building codes, or is that a given?
That's a given, actually.
Lee?
Nothing for it.
Okay. Marcy? Roger?
Just try and save the trees, some of the trees.
Okay, we'll vote on this application. All in favor of the application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Thank you.
Are we dismissed?
You, you certainly are unless you're incredibly curious. Very appropriate.
Jerry, thank you.
Nice to meet you folks. Our continued discussion of, uh, the shed ordinance is our next agenda item. Anything you would like to add, Jerry, to this discussion?
Well, after our last discussion, you, you, the consensus was that we proposed some kind of changes to the existing ordinance. And in your packet is, uh, the first page is a, is the definition of a shed and the proposed, uh, language that could be added to allow for one, uh, twelve by, or ten by twelve or less shed that would not count against impervious coverage on small lots. That, when we looked at the ordinance, trying to figure out what was the easiest way in the, to amend it, we felt that amending the definition was, was the, the best way to start. And then we, we also looked at the, uh, land use chart and the lot dimension chart. And we added a footnote which, uh, is in red, which basically says that one shed is be allowed to exceed impervious coverage. Looking, you know, we could have done a lot of things that were, had a lot of language to it, but it didn't make a lot of sense and, and sometimes it leaves a lot more to be interpreted. We thought that the keep it simple stupid was the best way to approach it, quite frankly.
In the past, this, did we have in there one-story shed or did it always say one-story shed?
Well, one would be exempt, one would be exempt if you had, if you had two, you, you couldn't have two to be exempt. You can only use the one to be exempt. We're not gonna have the issue on real big lots, we're gonna, the issue is gonna be in this area that we just talked about, quite frankly. And potentially some of the, the lots behind the city hall here.
So Jerry, are you saying if you already have a shed and want another one?
You're not gonna get another one. You've already got that one. Unless they don't have, you know, unless they're not at the twenty-five percent, then they could get to-
Ah, okay.
You could add another one then?
If they are not at the twenty-five percent, yes, they could.
So you could add three, four?
Yeah, and that, some people do that. Several people do that. Some people have done it, not, not so much because of that, is that they can be closer to the property line with a smaller one.
Oh, I've never thought of that one. I know last time I said in the R three, which is up on the hill, right?
Right.
Maybe we should go to like eight by ten, but then it'd be, get a little complicated, I suppose.
We're, we're trying to stay consistent with the existing today. We didn't wanna to either lower or raise the, the square footage from what we had.
I see you added no plumbing, that's kinda good.
Any other comments or questions? Eventually here, we have to decide on whether or not we wanna recommend this to the city council, but, um, before that, I guess we could continue our discussion or questions, Jerry? Tracy?
Is it appropriate and is there a way to, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is our temporary sheds that are just on skids and pulled in and set there.
Well, most, most of these sheds that are storage sheds do not have a permanent foundation.
Ninety-five percent of them.
They are on skids with a, with a wooden floor. That's what most of them are today.
And, and we think that would, that is acceptable. It's what, what we have, do we wanna have more?
I think one of the things that makes these things attractive is that they are somewhat portable and they get there today. If we wanna have a permanent foundation, then we have to have these, we probably are looking at making these sheds conform to state building code. Building code doesn't even recognize anything under two, two hundred square feet.
Then you'd have to have foundation inspections, I suppose, and all that?
Yeah, I, I think that, that really complicates the, the issue. People are attracted to these things because they get instant storage. I mean, they, they, it gets delivered and or built on site, but it's done within a day and, uh, they can go on with their lives. It isn't, you know, some people make it a weekend or two-weekend projects, but it's relatively, uh, again, and it's inexpensive, convenient, quick storage.
And the value to the community in our long-range plan is that stuff gets stored-
Keeps things undercover.
Yes, stuff gets out of, put out of sight. Hopefully.
Second line is the bottom there. Roof overhang shall not exceed one, and then it goes up to storage shed.
It's supposed to be eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches, okay.
That goes with the, the, the definition is eighteen inches.
Was that one of the complaints, so, didn't somebody complain that the people had too many sheds or something like that originally?
No, the, the complaint was that we issued a couple of shed permits where they exceeded the tw, the twenty-five percent coverage and they felt that the individuals should have, had to come through the, the variance process in order to get that.
Is it appropriate to have a motion to approve this refurbishment? Get on with the life?
Well, and, and to rec, recommend this, this to the city council, because this is an ordinance change.
I make a motion to recommend this to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion.
Looks like Jerry did a good job.
I agree.
Marcy?
I agree.
Good job.
Lee? Tracy? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. That, that may be the, the quickest action we've ever gotten to on a discussion of something. I, 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 I keep thinking of animal husbandry.
A lot of discussion on that, yes.
Just, just for your information, that, we've had some internal discussions about animal hus, husbandry in the last month.
Ah.
Uh, because of some properties changing hands and potential buyers wanting to do animals.
I didn't think that issue was done.
It won't go away.
No. No. Uh, next is open forum number two and I would guess we have nobody to speak. So I'll, I'll move to adjournment, or move to other, I'm sorry. Are there, is there any other?
I do have a thought. You know, you brought up the circle hill, how that's kind of a odd zone. What do you, do you think there should be separate zoning requirement for up there so we don't have all these one-offs all the time coming up?
I, I, you know, we, we had that discussion, um, internally again. We felt that this might be the easiest way to handle this initial item and then, uh, hoping that somebody would, would look at that and say, well, maybe we should need, have a, create a special zoning for that area, but that isn't something that we could get done real quick. But yeah, I think there's some merit to that. I, uh, you know, we, when we look at, when we look at zoning, we have a couple of, of animals, Circle Drive being one, uh, White Birds Camp Camping Cluster number one and White Birds Camping Cluster number two become, uh, other animals too that, uh, it's, it's almost, it's almost like you can't have any control in, in some of those areas because things just kinda appear in the middle of night.
We've never had variance that I'm aware of in White Birds.
I was just gonna say that, Roger.
So can they just?
Actually, the way some things are handled out there is that the, uh, the, the property owners apply for a, a permit with the campground itself. And the campground's got rules and regulations about how big of a accessory structure you can have and, and they've even got rules about if you have these, they call them Minnesota rooms, which are basically a screen porch, but how many windows you gotta have and, and that kinda stuff. And if they get approval there, then that, it comes to us with a building permit and, and, uh, there really isn't any way to control what's really happening out there. Because the, the campers are not permanent, you know, none of them are on foundations. The only thing that, that is real, uh, particular about that area is that, uh, cluster number one has, uh, mostly holding tanks for, for septic. Cluster number two is actually on, on the city municipal system, so that one's a little bit easier to, to manage, but, uh, those campers get put in there ki, kinda kittywampus and, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's well worth your while to take a drive through there sometime, but-
Each one of the ones that are in city sewer, does each campsite have to pay the city bill or is it local?
It goes, it, it's part of their annual dues to the, to the campground, the campground pays the, the sewer fee.
Do they have their own well?
Yes.
Not each individual?
Not individually, they do have some wells out there.
Okay.
So it's a different animal in, in Breezy Point.
So if we thought there should be a different zoning, would that come from this committee to say we recommend taking a look at it to initiate that request?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. I, I think, uh, you know, think about that a little bit and if you, if you wanna be serious about doing that, I think that would be something that, that might, um, work. I think the biggest problem is gonna be where do we define the, 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 the boundaries of the, of the district? I think that might be a bigger problem than anything.
But I, I agree, I think, I just was out for golf cart ride yesterday and ran into somebody who said they just need that, their permanent home. And I thought, is that now the thing, that they're gonna be looking at them as permanent? I mean, the water gets shut off, so does that mean?
Well, some of them must be putting wells in though.
They, they are. Again, it's the, it's the evolution of the, of the area, you know? It started as a, as a, a weekly rental type thing and then all of a sudden it went to, uh, private ownership, each individual lot. And it was, water was turned, it was served by municipal water and sewer, and it wasn't municipal, it was served by, uh, the water system from the, from the water tower at the, uh, resort. And they would turn the water on in April and, and turn it off in October and there wouldn't be any activity in that area. Well, today, people have started fixing up the interiors of those, some of those cabins are really nice inside. They promoted them as, as being year-round structures, they dug their own wells. I, I would think that someday there's, that street is probably gonna get improved and I think there's probably gonna be an improvement done to the, uh, the sewer system up there. But the other thing I think is that eventually, I think the, the resort is gonna say, we don't wanna serve them anymore. I think that might happen before anything happens and then everybody's gonna be either a, a seasonal or have to find another option for water. But there, there's an evolution happening in that area, that's, that's, it's different. And, and it, no different than, you know, the lakeshore cabins that used to be, uh, summer, now we're twenty-four, seven.
I would suspect the difference though is that those cabins are probably the cheapest or the, the most inexpensive way to get a place in Breezy Point.
Yeah, I think it's a stepping stone. The cheapest places, what, what we actually see happening is that people in the campground, they start at the campground and then they find a place to, to, to upgrade.
Yep. Is there, is there anybody in that campground that stays there all winter, do you know?
No, they can't because they turn off the water, um-
Okay, that water's shut off.
Yeah, the water shut- Yeah, the water shut up in October and, and it isn't shut back on until, until April.
Marcy, do you want to take any action today to get, get the ball rolling?
I, I suggest that you, you think about it a little bit and then come back next week or next month and, you know, if you, if you're serious about it, we'll, we'll put something together.
Okay. Well, I walked through there today and it looked like a landscaper was up there putting in a patio. And that would be a hard surface when, maybe you got a permit for that.
We don't even require permits for, for in-ground patios.
So that's a hard surface though.
I, I understand.
But a deck?
A deck is considered a impervious.
Right.
Didn't know that. So that's a way people can get around the impervious?
I, I think people have done that. In, in some instances, we've, we've required that they do the, the pervious paver type thing where they do, have to do the subsurface work. There's some of that happening right down here right now. There's a couple of new houses that have approached the 25%. And they're actually, you know, coming in and wanting a deck in the back where they, that wasn't part of the original plan. They're, they're up against the impervious coverage, so they're looking at doing the, the pervious pavers and that type of thing. There's also one house down there that is probably going to have a pervious driveway.
Never have figured out how pavement can be impervious.
Pelican Square?
Yeah, the, the Pelican Square. How does that work?
It's, well, it's, the, the key to it is the subsurface.
Oh, okay.
The key to it, it, they dig out about 16 inches and they put in clean rock and some, some filter fabric. And then it's the way they, when they get all that subsurface work done, then they come in and they put a blacktop in and the blacktop has got bigger, more porous material. Pelican Square has got a bunch of that stuff. The area around the, the resort has got a bunch of pervious.
I think it takes maintenance to make sure you keep it clean for the filtering.
Yeah, leaves and.
The, the, the key to it is the subsurface work and then it's, supposedly it's supposed to be vacuumed every so often and suck up the real fine materials. It does work if it's done properly and maintained. They even make concrete today that does that.
Yeah, but we don't get rain anyhow.
And that does not count at all to our impervious?
It does not. If it's done right, it does not. I think the, the big house that went up on, on County Road Four? The, the one that was torn down and the big house that was built, that whole, that whole driveway area that's out there is all done pervious.
And why would they do that?
Because they were up against the 25% pervious, impervious coverage.
The house was.
Yeah, the house, the house took it all up.
Okay, but the house.
It's, it's very expensive to do, but it's one way to get around that.
Right.
That issue.
Anything else? Our agenda or discussion? Not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.